Okay, starting a little bit late, I would like to call to order the Fridley School Board of Tuesday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, and I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we start, I would like to quick read a statement. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home, and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID nineteen coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Fridley ISD fourteen School Board is being conducted in accordance with the Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero two one, meeting by electronic means or by telephone. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or the superintendent to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. Citizens who would like to address the board on a topic on the meeting agenda may email the Fridley School Board at schoolboard@fridley.k twelve dot M N dot U S prior to the meeting. Please include your full name, the agenda item you wish to speak to, and your question or comment on the agenda item. School Board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. If you wish to speak, please state your name and then wait to be recognized. The chair will determine the order in which the board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, you should unmute your microphone, speak, and then mute. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as is reasonably possible. With that, do I have approval to have the agenda with suggestion? Do I have a motion to start the meeting?
Second.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Carol. And we just need to call the roll. Delvo.
I think there's still technical issues.
Okay, Purwito, yes, Carnap.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Okay, so we will begin the school board meeting.
You left me out.
Oh, I said Carol, sorry, I think you weren't there.
Yes. Yes.
Well, and obviously, you made the motion seconded, and so I assumed you were there with us, thank you. Dr. Heil, we are going to start with spotlight on recognition.
All right, good evening, Chair Purwito and school board members. Today, I am proud to go through all of our graduations that we have had at the end of the school year. So first of all, we had, of course, our class of two thousand and twenty graduation, and we want to share just more about our graduates. So we had two hundred and thirty-six graduates, including the ALC. We had eleven full IB diploma program candidates, which are six college-level courses and examinations over two years, and we had thirty students in the IB Scholars Program. We have one student who completed the Career Diploma Program. We had ten students who actually graduated with an associate's degree, seven Presidential Education Award students, thirty-two students graduated with honors, and that's with a GPA of three point two five to three point four nine. We had nineteen students with high honors with a GPA of three point five to three point seven four. We had twenty-four students graduating with the highest honors, and that involves a GPA of three point seven five or higher and a minimum of three IB diploma courses with external exams. So we had quite the class, so we're very proud of our class of two thousand and twenty. We also want to share with you celebrations. We also had quite a bit more celebrations going on for preschool, fourth grade, and eighth grade. So Fridley High School was not the only building celebrating graduates this month. Fridley Middle School put together video for the class of two thousand and twenty-four, which are our eighth graders that will be attending Fridley High School next fall. So the video included photo memories of the student in a staff, video clips from the FMS staff, and awards for the students that participated in band, jazz band, student council, theater, building club, varsity letter winners, student of the month winners, History Day recognition, and youth in government participation. So we also had Hayes and Stevenson was also honored, the class of two thousand and twenty-eight, that's our fourth graders, with virtual graduation programs and awards. And last but not least, we also, our youngest graduates were honored, our precares, with the video of memories from the past school years they graduated onto kindergarten in the fall. So here's just a real short video from our morning and afternoon pre-K classes. So that's our preschoolers, so we wanted to share them as well, and we're looking forward to hopefully seeing all of our kids in the fall at some point, so thank you.
Oh, that was wonderful. I love seeing those little happy faces. They are just so adorable. Okay, so next.
Quick, can I just quick give a shout out to the senior all-night parent group who took their all-night party and completely transformed it to a parade at the very last minute to honor their kiddos that COVID. The parade was amazing, it was so much fun. Both Jake and I drove some kiddos around. The community showed up, people who didn't have kids showed up. You know, it was a great collaboration between the school and the parents and the community. Everybody just kind of said, hey, this is what we want to do, let's figure this out. So it's really great to see how we were able to honor our little kiddos, our middle kiddos, and then our big kiddos. And I don't know if this is good news or bad news, but how excited everybody is to continue the tradition, regardless of what COVID and graduation looks like next year. So it just was really special to see those kids all dressed up in their cap and gown and thinking about the next steps. I talked to one young man, I was helping him decorate his car, and he said, you know, I knew graduation would be cool, and at first I was really bummed that we didn't get to walk across the stage, but this is way better. So I think those parents and everybody that helped, whether it was for the parade or some other way of making these kids feel special, I just, that was to me what, you know, Fridley is, so good job.
Adam here, I just want to not forget two of our board members whose children graduated also. They also parents before they become part board members. So congratulations to Director Stark and Director Mary Kay Delvo. Congratulations, and we wish you all the best with your, you know, congratulations on the achievement of your students.
Yes, thank you, and I don't know if we're going to keep that tradition, but I think that we should totally do the cars. I think it also gives those seniors a great opportunity to show off their rides. Also, the yard signs are amazing. I love driving around and seeing all the yard signs, so hopefully we can keep that up as well. I know that that was a big thing, driving around and seeing those. And the parade, I saw pictures and I saw video, and it was extremely impressive, so that was awesome. We are going to continue on.
Board chairs, just real quick too, and I think clearly we have the support of our city because they whipped together a parade in like a week. So imagine what our city of Fridley can do if they have some time to actually plan out a longer route and more, you know, fire trucks and things like that. So I think there's definitely a very big opportunity here to build upon our celebration of our seniors for next year. And it was awesome, it really was.
Also, along with that, since we're not doing the parade, the Fridley Forty-Niner days, maybe we can, now is a great time to get those people together, and maybe we can reel them all in and get something on the books for next year. I think that's a great idea, especially since they've, you know, had a year to save up, hopefully. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to business action items. We're going to do our typical resolution for accepting gifts. Every month, we are lucky enough to get gifts from people in the community. So whereas School Board Policy seven oh six establishes guidelines for the acceptance of the gifts to the district, and whereas Minnesota Statute four sixty-five point zero three states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. The following persons donated to Fridley Middle School for a total of thirteen thousand dollars. Get ready to purchase Chromebooks for the distant, for distance learning. The following persons donated to Fridley Nutritional Services Department for a total of one thousand six hundred dollars. Jan Harts, Hartsgood, to feed students during distance learning. Grace Johnson, for feeding students during distance learning. And Go Go Squeeze for student lunches. The following persons donated to Fridley Public Schools, Becky Castell, fifty cloth masks. So we so appreciate that, and since this is a resolution, I'm going to be calling all of our members, so let us start with Adam.
Adam, here.
Delvo.
Delvo, yes.
Purwito, yes, Carnap.
Carnap, yes.
Stark.
Stark, yes.
And Thornton.
Yes.
So as the resolution, that will be passed. And next, we are going to move on to the resolution for renewal membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
Thank you, Chair Purwito and school board members. This evening, I will be asking for the board to approve the renewal membership for the Minnesota State High School League for Fridley High School Sports and Activities. This is an annual resolution that is presented each year.
So with that, do we have a motion to approve the Minnesota State High School League?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Thornton, seconded by Stark, and I will again call the roll. Adam.
Adam, yes.
Delvo.
Delvo, yes.
Carnap.
Carnap, yes.
Purwito, yes, Stark.
Stark, yes.
And Thornton.
Yes.
So the motion passes. Next, we will go on for the approval of the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-one Nutritional Services Master Agreement, and we are going to ask Mr. Ikenson to tell us a little bit about that.
Good evening, and thank you Board Chair Purwito, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Presented tonight for your approval are two agreements recently negotiated with the SEIU for the Nutritional Services and the Para-Educator Labor Groups. These agreements being passed unanimously and at a vote of forty to one respectively by these deeply appreciated bargaining groups.
Wonderful, thank you so much. So do we have a motion to approve the Nutritional Services and Para-Professionals Master Agreement?
So.
We'll do Stark and seconded by Carnap. And we will call the roll. Adam.
Adam, yes.
Delvo.
Delvo, yes.
Purwito, yes, Carnap.
Carnap, yes.
Stark.
Stark, yes.
And Thornton.
Yes.
All right. Next, we will be moving on to approve the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening, Chair Purwito, Superintendent Heil, members of the school board. We are at the point in the cycle where we'll be approving or looking to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget for the, for the public schools. We've worked on this budget here for several months now, we've had several updates in the work sessions. So we've had several meetings, so tonight we're going to go through kind of the high level of here's what the end result of the budget process has been. So first, I wanted to walk through just an overview of the revenues of the general fund, just so people have an idea of the several different funding sources that we have and the different ways that they're calculated. So the first chunk of revenues that I have listed here on the slide is revenues that are impacted by enrollment projections. The main one in there is the General Education Basic Revenue Formula. So typically, whenever we're going through a legislative session, you'll hear the state saying, you know, we're giving two percent increase in the formula to schools. This is what that, that revenues piece is that they're talking about. And so for fiscal year twenty-one, that amount is six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars per pupil unit. There are a few other restricted funding categories that are tied to pupil units as well, such as gifted and talented, staff development, learning and development, operating capital. These all have specific uses that the district must spend within. We also have some other known revenues, so pieces that we already know. This is what our revenues will be, and one of those is our tax levy revenue. So the tax levy is done on a lag, so the, the, the school board will have approved the tax levy in two thousand and nineteen. The taxpayers pay those taxes in two thousand and twenty, and it becomes revenue for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. So we knew back in December of nineteen what our revenues were going to be for next year. And because it's on a lag, there are adjustments because it does get trued up for enrollment, but we'll always know a year ahead of time what that tax revenue will be. We also have some other state aids that are based on prior year enrollments. So our compensatory funding and our QCOM funding are two examples that are based on prior year enrollments. So we also can have pretty tight projections on those as we go through the budget process. There are a few items that are a little bit more, more of just an estimate, harder to gauge. One of those is special education. It's a very complex funding formula that's got several moving parts to it. It's partially based on what we spend. It's partially based on if the state has enough money. There's times where that gets prorated because the state funds tend to run out. And then we have federal revenues where we don't know what those allocations are yet, so that's part of what we, we, we budget conservatively, and then as we get those final amounts, we'll make those revisions next fall and make those adjustments. And then we have other local revenues such as fees and donations and interest that are also can fluctuate year to year, but we try and budget conservative, conservatively with those. Next, I'll talk about the expenditure side of it. Enrollment is one of the biggest drivers of our staffing allocations. The staff, class size ranges are listed here, and these have stayed consistent for several years. So depending on where our enrollment projects out, it determines the number of staff that we will be, number of positions we will have. When we look at the salaries and benefits, we'll also include projected steps and lanes and contract settlements for those that are known. We build in assumptions for contracts that aren't quite settled yet. We also make other assumptions such as turnover and attrition because that happens year to year, so we make some assumptions on that. We also have non-people costs where we already know what our lease agreement costs are going to be. We, we assume utilities go up, it's kind of part of what happens with the market, and same with insurance and transportation. Those are also contracts that inherently go, go up with the market year over year. We look at our enrollment projection, you can see we, we've kind of tailed off here the last couple of years. So the, the solid blue bars are years that have been completed. The checkered bar is current year that we're just wrapping up, and then the white blue bars is our projection out to the future. So our enrollment peaked back in the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year. We've had, had a decline here the last couple, but we've stabilized here for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. And then as you look out, we're showing a slight decline year over year, mainly due to we have larger classes going through our secondary schools right now, and our incoming kindergarten classes aren't as large or predicted to be as large. So we're, we're declining because we have more kids graduating than the next year's incoming kindergartners. But so overall, it's, it's nice to see that that significant drop in enrollment has flattened out that we, we experienced here a couple of years ago. So when we look at the general fund, this is the main operating fund of the district. We have several different fund balance categories. We have our unassigned fund balance, which is what our board policy is based off of. So the board policy is to strive for a, a minimum fund balance of seven percent of our expenditures. We have non-spendable fund balance, those are assets that we have that aren't in spendable form. So inventory, we've already paid for it, but it's still an asset for us, so we can't go, you know, spend that again. Assigned is assigned at the district level, so money that's set aside for specific purposes, specific uses. And then our restricted funding categories, those are restricted by state statute or an external entity. So these are all restricted by MDE or the legislature with those funding formulas. So at the end of the day, we are projecting a surplus of one hundred and eighty thousand for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, and that leaves us with a fund balance percentage of seven point six percent. So that's a positive thing. So we did have a pretty status quo budget this year because we did have a successful operating levy increase a year ago. So this is when now we're seeing the benefit of that, so we were able to be pretty status quo with how we were operating. When we look at where our revenues come from, this gives a breakdown of the different categories. So that general education aid, that largest piece of the pie, forty-five percent, that's that main basic formula allowance that we, we talked about earlier, or if the state says you get two percent, that's the piece of the pie that gets the two percent increase. The other state aids are those pieces that are also per pupil driven, operating capital, gifted and talented, learning and development. So they're state aid, but they're separate from that, that formula that gets referred to in the legislative section. Our categorical state aids are things like compensatory dollars, QCOM funding, other state aids that have different restrictions to them. Our federal revenues is a very small portion of our budget, it's only three percent. And then the local revenues is the taxpayer levy as well as fees and registrations, donations, things like that. So overall, this is pretty standard with how our budget shakes out each year on the revenue side. We look at the expenditure side, school districts, we're, we're very staff-heavy. We're a people business, we serve our students, and seventy-three percent of our budget goes towards salaries and benefits. So anytime we're looking at our budget, it's, it's a significant amount goes towards the people that, you know, it's kind of the workhorse behind the district. Purchased services is the next largest piece of the pie, that's things like our auditors, our attorneys. All of our bus contracting goes through there, repairs and maintenance contracts go through there. So those are the pieces that we contract out because it's not as beneficial for us to hire those, those positions. This is a more, we get the expertise and without having to incur more cost than necessary. Supplies and materials and capital are three and four percent of our budgets. And then debt service, other expenditures, and other financing uses are a very small portion as well. So like I said before, we're very heavy on the people side, and that's a, it's a good thing because that's, that's how we serve our kids. So when we look at the other funds within the budget, so that was the general fund, so now we'll move into kind of those other checkbooks that we have to operate within. The first fund here listed is our Food Service Fund, our Child Nutrition Program. This is one of the two funds that was impacted the most by the distance learning and the stay-at-home workers with COVID nineteen. So we, you know, we had to kind of change how we did things in our programming change pretty quickly. So we're budgeting for next year, assuming kids come back and everything is flowing as it had been. But we will continue to monitor everything as we, as we go kind of on a month-by-month, week-by-week basis. But the Food Service Fund is projecting a slight surplus next year. We do have a healthy fund balance. Probably won't begin the year as high because of COVID nineteen, but we, that's the, the nice thing of having that healthy fund balance to start with is we were able to absorb a little bit of a loss here for our current year. We look at the Community Education Fund, this is the fund that was probably impacted the most by COVID nineteen because majority of their programming is fee-based. So whenever all programming was canceled and schools were closed, school age care ended for a while, that, that really took a big hit. So they've had to kind of really dig in and scale back to, to be realistic on what we can accomplish here with what we know with what's going on around us. So the current budget proposed, proposed is a lot lower in total spend and total revenue compared to prior years, but that's intentional because we can't operate that way. So we're evaluating as we go, you know, governor orders, the CDC guidelines, interest from our community to, to, to get programs back up and running. So as those things align, we are growing those programs back. But initially, we're, we're showing a deficit for next year of one hundred and forty-seven thousand. But like I said, that's going to be fluid as we go. We'll be making adjustments to the offerings that we have, and this isn't uncommon. We, we were in a similar position a few years back, and we were able to build our way out of it. So, so we're, you know, being cautiously optimistic that we're going to build even better programming here as we go. We look at the Capital Projects Fund, that's our Capital Projects Levy that's dedicated towards the deferred maintenance side of the, the Capital Projects Levy, a portion that also goes towards technology. Our Debt Service Fund is for our general debt as well as our OPEB debt, so whenever we issue bonds, there's a separate fund that actually accounts for those tax levy dollars as well as those debt payments. And then our Internal Service Fund represents our self-insured medical and dental plans, which are running very healthy. And then our Trust and Agency Fund is our OPEB trust, which is, um, funds that we have set aside to pay for post-employment health benefits. So that fund is also sitting very healthy as well. So those are the main funds of our budget that we have before you for approval. I will open up for any questions, otherwise we have a recommendation included in the board packet to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget.
You make it look easy, Brady.
I was just going to say something very similar to that, you know, he talks numbers and it makes sense. You know, a lot of times numbers just, oof, but you do a really good job, so thank you. Anyone have any questions for Brady? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Motion to.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Carnap. Okay, we will go, go through the roll. So Adam.
Adam, yes.
Delvo.
Delvo, yes.
Carnap.
Carnap, yes.
Purwito, yes, Stark.
Stark, yes.
Thornton.
Yes.
Wonderful, and that resolution passes. Brady, were you also going to talk with us about nine sixteen?
Yep, I can go over that here pretty quick. This is a resolution to authorize and approve the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan of nine sixteen. So long-term facility maintenance funding is a funding stream available to districts to allow us to maintain our buildings and do the deferred maintenance that is necessary. In order for the intermediate districts to access those funds, they need their member districts to also approve their budget. Because part of that is an intermediate district doesn't have the tax base to do their own levy, so it's levied by the member districts and then passed on back to intermediate nine sixteen. So this budget that they have, it's already been approved by nine sixteen's board. um back to intermediate nine sixteen. So this budget that they have, it's already been approved by nine sixteen's board. Um, so it's a hundred and seventy hundred and seventy-three thousand is what their proposed spend is for the next year. Um, Fridley's share of that is about fifty-six hundred dollars is what would be passed on to our taxpayers, so it would levy on our taxpayers, and then we would um then remit that back to intermediate nine sixteen. Um, so this is the step in the process that would uh, you know, where Fridley would approve that budget and authorize that levy to be passed on to the Fridley taxpayers to benefit the intermediate school district.
Wonderful, so that is resolution approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District number nine sixteen's long-term facility maintenance program budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Do I have a motion to approve?
Delvo moved to approve.
Motion by Delvo, seconded by Thornton. Okay, so let's go ahead, Adam?
Adam, yes.
Delvo?
Delvo, yes.
Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Peruido, yes. Stark?
Stark, yes.
And Thornton?
Yes.
So that resolution passes. Next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. That includes minutes of the school board business meeting, the work session, the closed session held on May nineteenth twenty twenty, and also the closed session held on May twenty-sixth twenty twenty. That includes monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of the absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion moved.
Delvo moved.
Uh, we'll do motion by Adam, seconded by Delvo. And we'll go ahead and call the roll. Adam?
Adam, yes.
Delvo?
Delvo, yes.
Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Peruido, yes. Stark?
Stark, yes.
And Thornton?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Next, we're going to go ahead and go to reports from school board members. And we can start with Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting that was held on May sixteenth twenty twenty. Did anyone attend that?
No, we don't have attendance for that one, Chair Peruido.
Okay, so let's move on to AMSD, which is Association of Metropolitan School Districts. That board meeting was held on May twenty-second twenty twenty, and Ivana, did you attend that one?
I did, Chair Peruido.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, um, so uh good evening Chair Peruido and school board members. I attended a Zoom meeting uh May twenty-second for AMSD. Uh, there were several speakers at that um meeting that day. Uh, we had Deputy Commissioner Heather Mueller was there, and she spoke on having flexibility in summer school. It was right at the point when the MBE has started making a decision on how summer school would look. So there was an option given to school districts that you could even have a hybrid model of where you could have distance learning and students on site, or you can have distance learning. And we decided that we had Fridley, we were going to be doing distance learning summer school and uh specialty at summer school, so E S Y. Um, they also discussed three options that could be possible for the fall for our students who attend um all districts, so it could be all students on site, or the hi- or all students doing distance learning, or the hybrid model, or a certain part doing distance learning and a certain part uh being on site. There was also a presentation from uh Dr. uh Tom Melcher, who works in MDE school finance. And he talked about the E twelve bill, and it it's a big, it was like forty pages, but one of the main things is um uh our achievement and integration revenue can be carried over. So we were able to authorize a school district and carry some of that over to the next year to be able to use due to some of it was probably not used during COVID. As well as a larger part of that was as well, that all statewide assessments uh was weighed for the twenty nineteen twenty school year. We also had someone named Andre Prow, who's the agency's finance director, and he reviewed uh COVID funding. So he reviewed the CARES Act, and what the CARES Act actually stands for is Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, in case anybody ever wanted to know. And we always say ESER as well, and what that stands for is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act. So with um GEAR, which is a governor's emergency education relief. Uh, so the state of Minnesota um received funding, and it's focused on three areas. So what mean funding you receive from that has to address summer school programming, technology, and then there's five million dollars in competitive grants that schools can apply for. Then our larger one, our ESER one, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Education Relief. Um, schools, districts get that in according to allocated to the amount that they get for uh school year twenty Title One allocations. And they also have very specific uh along list of money that you can use for that. So uh some of it is just to improve coordinated responses, prevent, prepare, and respond to coronavirus. Uh, providing principals and school leaders with resources necessary uh to address needs in their buildings. Definitely activities to address unique needs of low-income children or students or children or English language learners. Purchasing of supplies, sanitizer, mask, things like that. Uh, planning and coordinating for uh long-term closures. Uh, so there's quite a bit of that, and there's even around uh providing mental health services and support you've used that for and purchasing educational technologies. So uh that was what was discussed at the AMSD board meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. And Northwest, oh, hang on just a second. So then we also have a report from Northeast Metro nine sixteen board meeting held on June third twenty twenty. Um, did somebody attend that?
Um, I did, Chair Peruido. This is um uh Mary Kate Delvo. Uh, in our June meeting for nine sixteen, we got an update on technology and some of the challenges and and ways that they are doing remote learning and support for students at nine sixteen. Um, they uh also approved the preliminary uh fiscal year twenty-one budget for the nine sixteen district. Uh, the rest of our our meeting was fairly standard items in terms of our annual food, uh nine sixteen's annual food agreements with the various um schools. So they don't ha- they don't have a nutritional services program themselves. They contract with other school districts to provide that at their various school buildings, so we approved those contracts. Uh, the Bel Air Education Center uh will be purchasing new classroom furniture. This has been part of their capital plan, and they have not um, and their furniture came due this year. Uh, we also approved the two-year contract between the school district and the Education Assistance Federation Local twenty-three forty-three and a transportation management management uh services contract as well. And this is something you will not hear every day. We uh approved the retirement of the executive assistant to the superintendent Linda Zeradka for her fifty years of service to the nine sixteen district. She actually started out as an intern and was one of the first two employees of the ni- Northeast Metro nine sixteen districts in the state. Um, and she has, she has just uh uh I mean, she has just done incredible work there and and really is one of two people that has the full history of the district. So that is gonna be a a huge loss for the district, and as you can imagine, was a teary goodbye um for Ms. Zeradka. So um, we wished her well, and uh that concludes my report.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, next, I would like to let you know about some important future school board dates. Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be June seventeenth twenty twenty at six fifteen. The next Fridley Board Public Schools Board Meeting will be July seventh twenty twenty, work session at five thirty. We will also have another board meeting. Um, the Fridley Public School Board Meeting, starting at five thirty with the work session. And that is July twenty-first twenty twenty. Does anyone have anything to add before I make a quick statement? No. Okay, thank you. I would just like to um read a statement that I'm sure has touched many of us in one way or another. In the last few weeks, our nation has become more aware of the racial injustice that is often experienced by African Americans in our communities. The murder of George Floyd and other African Americans in the past few months have left our communities and nation grieving and angry at the tragic deaths and racial injustice. We applaud the students, families, and staff who have exercised their rights to peacefully protest and increase awareness for racial justice. The Fridley School Board strongly condemns racism and any acts of violence and injustice against our communities of color. We do not tolerate racism. We continue to work hard to make Fridley Public Schools the best place to learn and the best place to work by reviewing our own systems, policies, and practices to ensure that all students and families feel welcomed and valued. Our commitment to support the district administration in its equity work is unwavering. We promise to continue to prioritize the development and maintenance of a safe and welcoming environment for all of our students and families. Provide equitable opportunities where each student can thrive and reach his or her fullest potential. And recruit staff who represent our diverse student body. The work of racial equity cannot be achieved overnight. But we will be relentless in our supporting proactive actions and strategies that will ensure the public schools is a safe and welcoming environment that values and celebrates the racial backgrounds and identities of all of our students, families, and staff. Would anyone else like to take a moment to say anything?
I have a statement, but I'll be throwing it on my school board Facebook page if anybody wants to read it. That way they can process it on their own time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stark. With that, I will um entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have got a motion by Stark and a second by Thornton. So one final roll call. Adam?
Adam, yes.
Delvo?
Delvo, yes.
Carnop?
Carnop, yes.
Peruido, yes. Stark?
Stark, yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
So the meeting is officially adjourned at eight nineteen P M.